We'll call the Ways and Means Committee together today, Tuesday, October the 4th, 2016, at 4:10. Deanne, would you please call the roll?
Chairman?
Here.
Charlie?
Here.
Durance?
Here.
Yep?
Here.
Here.
Les?
Here.
Krieger?
Yes.
Thank you, Deanne. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes of September the 6th, 2016.
Motion approved, Commissioner.
Support. Moved in support. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll allow for public input. Laura, I see you're going to the podium.
Thank you. Yes, I was asked. Tom Hickner has been working with the Monitor DDA and the agreements and with you all about kind of getting a better understanding of when it sunsets and some of the challenges of what happens when it sunsets, or if there's a way to salvage that agreement at all. I have asked Steve King, he is here today. He's the City of Bay Cities Community Development Director, and he is the former Kochville Township Manager as well as the Kochville Township DDA President for over eight years. And so he's going to give us a brief, kind of a description of some of the challenges of what happens when a DDA sunsets and then tries to re-establish. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Steve King. I've been with the City of Bay City for about two months now, but I took over as the new Community Development Director there. Laura kindly asked me to come and meet you this afternoon. Thank you for having me. I was previously the Township Manager and also the DDA Director of Kochville Township, which is in northern Saginaw County, home of SBSU, for some time. And then prior to that, I was actually the DDA Director in Ithaca, which is the county seat of Gresham County, much smaller community. My understanding is that before you, you're trying to figure out what, if anything, to do or recommend on a DDA that you have that is probably sunsetting at the end of the year. What I can share with you is that there's quite a lengthy process that goes into establishing, re-establishing a DDA and/or its tax increment financing district. The process generally involves the local government needs to adopt a resolution of support for considering a DDA. There's a 20-day notice period prior to holding a public hearing. You have to post notice at at least 20 different locations within the DDA district and mail notice to all affected property owners and capture jurisdictions such as the county and any other entities through which taxes might be captured, in the case of a TIF district, of a tax increment financing district. It's a lengthy process because after that notice, there has to be at least 60 days until the public hearing is held. And, or excuse me, the notice is 20 days prior to the public hearing, after which there's a 60-day period for notice to essentially be considered by the captured entities and by the affected property owners. So in essence, you've got at least an 80-day-long process through which to consider whether or not to adopt a TIF district or to establish, excuse me, establish or re-establish your DDA district. It's quite a lengthy process. If a DDA sunsets, I'm not sure you're familiar with the DDA, but many DDAs are funded significantly through tax capture, through this tax increment financing district. It's a very valuable tool for dedicated economic development projects for a local government. Obviously, this is all done through the DDA Act of 1975. There are a number of very successful projects that have been funded through this process. The significance is that over time, a tax capture district, a tax increment financing district, is designed to build up equity that is essentially captured to fund those economic development-focused projects that are in the established development plan for the DDA. When a DDA sunsets, that equity resets, so you lose the gap there with the funding equity. That's the choice for the local unit, to be clear. The local unit is actually the body that makes such a decision on understanding DDA. The laws have changed for new DDAs. Without knowing the circumstances of the DDA that in question, if the DDA is allowed, sunsets, and then is re-established, the process must be followed, which is about the same thing of potentially recreating that DDA in the future if the local entity wants to do that. But the equity that was built up in that TIF district will reset, so the base value from which that capture is determined will reset to whatever December, if it were to be established, say, in 2017, that value be reset to the value as determined for the district in December 31st, 2016. So just be aware that allowing a DDA to sunset resets that value. It would take more time, obviously, for that captured value to be built up to fund economic development projects. It takes, like I said, about 80 days to follow that process. And I don't know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer them. I just wanted to give you a quick two cents on what that process looks like. If that DDA is to sunset, it'll need to give notice to the State Department of Treasury. There are mandatory reports that have to be filed with the Department of Treasury every year about how tax increment financing funds are captured, about how they are spent, and so Treasury will need to know about that. That is the local unit's responsibility, not the county's.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yeah, the, as you mentioned, the law, it's 75, I think you said, the law was established and there's been some push to change the law through the Mission Association of Counties and Township Association to, because of the capture that occurs for special millages, for libraries and stuff like that, that maybe should not be on that because the vote is voted for that, you know, for a library or whatever they voted for. That should be just general fund money. So, you know, that's being looked at. On the other hand, I was at the Monitor Township meeting and they voted to keep the DD going. The DDA board did also, but we voted against it to keep it going. And I've been at their meetings and they've talked about it. If it goes away, how long it takes to re-establish, if they get some people that want to move in the area. They have land in the east, they still have some empty lots in the west. So my opinion is that we should try to keep it going. Apparently we're not going to lose any of our tax capture money with what their plan is, just to keep it sort of a placeholder like the federal government or the state government uses to keep an entity going so that you can reactivate it if you need to with a small sum of money. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Commissioner Herrick.
It's all privately owned. Why do you make it keep it going? If all the lots are privately owned, they're all private lots?
Sure.
So what could this do to keep the DDA going?
Well, I can speak from my experience with Kochville Township. I don't know what's in the Monitor Township development plan. I'm not familiar with that at all. But the eligible projects that money can be spent on, particularly tax increment financing revenues. The DDA can also, through, in this case, the Township Board, if the Township Board approves it, special assess property owners up to two mills on those properties. Those funds are, I don't want to say unrestricted, but they are not encumbered anywhere near to the same extent that TIF funds are. The captured funds have to be, can only be spent on projects within the development plan that's been adopted by the local unit of government. Those projects, the value of that property actually comes from privately-owned land. Obviously, if it's locally, publicly owned, it's not generating any tax money that can be captured.
So what you're saying is that, so the DDA owned it and sold it to somebody who was trying to use it and flip it. So what would this end up?
If they're trying to flip the property, of course, they're, I'm assuming they're trying to enhance the value of the property.
Well, they're trying to make, obviously, make money off of it. But who they making money off of? You know, that's what I'm saying. You know, if they buy, if they buy it and say, hey, maybe somebody will come here and buy this from me, they can put something out here. By the meantime, I'm going to make money off the property that the DDA sold me. So, you know, is that, is that the way it's supposed to happen?
All I can say is that what's in the development plan, the purpose of a DDA is to enhance land values across that DDA. And so whatever is in the development plan for the DDA, those monies should be spent towards activities that enhance the value of that property and ideally the land around that property as well. And so if the expenditures are accounted for in the development plan and there is speculation taking place that's almost designed, the way the DDA is supposed to work, to enhance and boost those land values. But I guess that's all I can say.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the DDA is set up for a downtown development, correct?
Yeah, that was the intent, obviously, by the name. Yes, sir.
Because like in Kochville Township, they really don't have a downtown. They're spread out.
I would agree with you. The name is very much a misnomer. Yes.
And the same thing would be hoped. Is held true with Monitor Township? There is no down unless you consider Two Mile and Midland Road and Willow Bar.
Certainly. Absolutely.
That's a banker.
That's a banker.
Oh, see. So it's confusing when people ask, well, how can you have a DDA when it's out in farmland?
I will say, there's, at the state level, I'm not an expert at this, there's been a lot of attention given to how DDAs are overseen at the higher level than just the local unit. And there hasn't been any action taken legislatively, but I know that Downtown Development Authority name has been an issue in a number of communities. You're absolutely right. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hickner's answer is up.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Chair, I was just going to try to answer Commissioner Herrick's question. I can give you three examples of why you create a tax increment financing district. One would be what happened out at the park where the Civic Arena is. That road was built through tax increment financing of the property owners who, the road was built, the property owners went in and developed the property, and the taxes from that, those office buildings are paying for the road. And that happened years ago. In downtown Bay City, the streets that were repaved, most, if not all, of those dollars came from the DDA and the money that they've captured. As the commissioners know, and you know that those dollars are not, those are dollars that otherwise would be collected and given to either the county and our entities like the Division on Aging, Delta College, the library system. And what happens is the money is being diverted. In the case of the Monitor Tech Park, that would not have been developed but for the capture of the taxes because under, and going forward, it's going to be even more the case that there are no federal dollars available to build roads and put in water and sewer. There are no state dollars to speak of. There's some, but not a lot. The Road Commission has no money, and the Township does not have the money to put in the infrastructure. So that's what, the fundamental thrust of what you want to be doing in the case of the Monitor DDA. And as I said to the Chair before the meeting, this is not an agenda item, so I don't think we want to have a long discussion of it, is the Monitor DDA has a long history of issues. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Hickner, Commissioner Durancha.
Thank you. I was fortunate enough to be nominated to set up the DDA 20-some years ago in Pinconning. And I'm just here to tell you that if that had not been set up and our capture, there would not be Water Street, would not be there. All our streetlights would not be in Pinconning. The post office would still be up on the highway where people are getting, were getting in accidents, about four a day. All these projects came, and granted, this is, in Pinconning, is nowhere near the scope of capture like what's out there. But even a small DDA has its purpose. And that would not have happened in Pinconning had it not been, you know, for the DDA and the captures. Yes, you know, people sacrificed, the senior citizens, what their millages, senior citizen millage, and the mosquito control and all those sacrifices. But we have safe place downtown that's nice, you know, it's groomed and everything else. So I'm a huge supporter of that. And I'd hate to see, even if there was a possibility of bringing in jobs or another location, and we can go there because we don't have enough money in the account to do the infrastructure. Because if that tax base goes from 1988 to 2016, there won't be money there. You're not going to get the money from the county, you know, that for infrastructure, water, sewer, and all that's not going to happen. So, you know, that's why I would be in support. If they could come up with some kind of a plan, which we haven't really, you know, I've heard rumors, some type of a plan to make the county and things that people have elected that they want, senior citizen millages, to make the county whole in that respect, I think we should renew this for, you know, so they have that opportunity for that infrastructure and to purchase more land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Durancha. My thought on this, I guess if we're going to have a little discussion on this, is DDAs, I supported the DDA, but when their project is completely a sunset, if you don't continue to extend it, and there are more people hurt than just the millages, the special millages, seniors, libraries, you've got the whole general fund that's being hurt because it's not collecting those taxes that have been captured for the development of whatever parcel of land. And with Monitor, that particular park, or that particular development has been completed. And that's when those dollars then come back to the general fund so that we can manage those dollars as best as we can, as we did give our employees some raises, which we may not have been able to. So I, nobody, or at least me, I'm not going to speak for anybody else. I think I was a swing boat in that DDA about eight or 10 years ago. And, you know, when it was complete, it's done. You don't just continue to keep it going into perpetuity. And Tom, you mentioned, I think, downtown, the roads. I think they probably just extended that downtown DDA to do the roads. And, you know, those are dollars that normally go to the general fund, which are now being used for roads, which are a general fund expenditure, and that's a good thing. But, and I know Bob's been working, and Tom, you've been working with Monitor to come up with something. But I think it's time, in my view, to capture those dollars that have been, have been being captured by the DDA, have them come back to the general fund. And if we can set up some sort of an agreement with them on a future parcel with the dollars that have already been sunset, starting all over, I don't have a problem with that. Commissioner Till.
You know, and I just want to remind people that when I was chairman, we offered a compromise to the DDA, that if they would give back discussing millages, that I would bring proposals to the board to go after, so they could continue for a maximum, a number of years. And they flat out told us, no, they wanted it all. All the infrastructure is laid there already. The roads are there, the water lines are there, the electricity's there. Everything is already set in that DDA and that park. It's come to perpetuity. If they want to start another project, I don't think anybody in this board is going to be against them starting another project. Then do the process and go through the process. You've had all this time to collect those revenues, and you've used those revenues to plow driveways, cut grasses, which I don't think enhances the revenue of the park. But I think that the business owner should have taken up that expense, but because they had money to spend on those kind of things, that's what they were using it for. That's an abuse of public taxpayer dollars. But so, you know, you guys can do whatever you want to do next year as my time ticks out of here. But I, we've already voted on this. It's time to move forward and let them start another project. I'd love to see another project started out there. It'd be absolutely wonderful to see something else happen out there. If you've still got area plan to develop and cross the street, across the highway, go for it. And we'll, as a county, I'm sure we'll be behind that. Go. I'm sure you guys are good.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. King, for your time and your information. Appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else under public info? Seeing no one's coming forward, under our next order of business, under petitions and communications, we have from Bay County Treasurer, this is the annual review of the delinquent tax revolving fund. Rick, do you want to give us a little synopsis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this is the annual review, as Commissioner Coonan said, which is required. And it was kind of eye-opening to me. I work on it every day, but it's the first time in my 12 years I could do a report and say everything's kind of flown as is year to year to year. Obviously, we've all gone through the Great Recession, and probably sticks in our minds pretty hard. And it's hard to believe that we've already surpassed that because when we were going through that, you remember, our total delinquents went up tremendously. And that's when we had to draw down on reserves. And our revenues went up a little bit in the short run. And we're trying to balance it, make sure there's money. So it was kind of like home when I put this together, surprised myself a little bit. But I think it's a good place to be. The amount of outstandings have kind of stabilized in the low $6 million per year. Our cash on hand is adequate to make that distribution to the local units to help fund their budgets, their cash flow, and we have adequate money available. So overall, it's a good thing to be, a good place to be. Hopefully, hopefully the economy may improve a little bit in the future, and our tax rolls will increase a little bit, and we make a little more money, and delinquents won't go out of line. But just to back up a bit, back 20-some years ago, I started working there. We were in the $5 million range. And then we popped up into the Southern, and all of a sudden we had to have $2 million on hand because there were discussions in the past, well, we have all this money built up on, we just use it. Well, when that day came, we had it still there. So I think we have a very good formula. It's worked well, and hopefully it'll continue as such. This also ties back into my recommendation of 1.2 million, which is part of the budget process that I've already gone through and given the finance. This kind of ties it all together.
Thank you, Rick. I see Commissioner Krieger.
Yeah, we're, in comparison to 2015, obviously, we're in a much better position than we were then, correct?
Compared to 2015, like last year? I'd say we're about in the same spot, but it's, we're in a better spot than we were when delinquents were rising dramatically, and we had a covenant and all that, more than five years ago. But it's, it's kind of like it's, we're just kind of
Stable.
Stable and going, and it's operating fine unless there's another shock to the economy. I think we're, you know, taking out approximately the earnings, which has been the history. And being, the other nice thing is that we aren't borrowing money. Some counties are still borrowing money when they, we're taking money out of these years ago. So they're paying extra interest where we're able to cover it. And like I said, there's actually a little cushion in there. Should something dramatic happen, we can cover either increased delinquencies, or if there was some kind of financial problem somewhere else in the county, there's a bit of a cushion there. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Anybody else have anything for Rick? Commissioner Durancha.
Just a compliment that, according to the figures that you provided us, it looks like it's really been stable for the last five years. So that's a good reflection on the job that you guys do in the treasurers.
Well, thank you. It's, economy has something to do with it too, but it's, I guess the other thing to point out too is, you know, we are transferring 1.2 million dollars from a delinquent tax fund where the treasurer's office is working day to day to help stabilize or balance the general fund. So that's $100,000 a month just being transferred automatically.
It's pretty much been the average for the last five years.
Yes, it has.
The general fund appreciates it.
Okay, good.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the prosecutor's office, we have 2000, well, this is an agreement, CSPA 1709002. It's a 4D contract. That's with Child Support Services and.
So moved.
Moved in support. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the Drain Commissioner, the 2016 County Outlarge Assessments for Drain Projects.
So moved.
Moved in support. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the Director of the Division on Aging, this is the acceptance of an additional grant funds, $3,200.
So moved.
For support. Moved in support. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number E would be BCAT's Director, this is the utilization of the Federal Transportation Planning Funds and Asset Management Funds for 2017.
So moved.
Moved in support. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the Recreations and Facilities, the Civic Arena, this is the purchase of a new frozen carbonated beverage machine.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved in support. Any questions? Commissioner Krieger.
I do have a question. You know, we kind of chit-chat a second. So, maybe for next week, I'm just concerned about the maintenance of the equipment. Doing the numbers the way Kristin did, it does show that it would be profitable for us, seeing that we're doing 4,000 ICs or whatever they call them a year.
Yes.
There would be a real decent savings on the economics that go with it. But my concern is, what is the warranty from the manufacturer, if there is? And maybe even if there's some type of a service contract, make sure that it doesn't go down.
We can look up the length of the maintenance agreement. And also, since then, I did get the dollar amount for what we charge. It's $2 for a small and $2.75 for a large.
Okay.
So, and what we sold, 4,197 Slurpees in 2015. So it kind of gives you an idea of where we.
Few bucks. Very good. Certainly support it. I just want to make sure we're not digging a hole, becoming the owner of a piece of equipment that obviously gets used. Thank you.
Okay. A couple other hands. Even.
Well, that's the other thing that I want to bring up, who already did. Commissioner Durancha and I had a discussion before the meeting. And, you know, yeah, it's a great big thing to get this, and it looks like on the surface that it's going to pay for itself. But being business owners that find new equipment and then down the road, when you're using that stuff day after day, you know, the usable life of that goes down. I mean, I just had to get it, you know, my major compressor, you know, repaired. Okay? Yeah, we used it for five years, but now it wasn't working at all. And I was without it for three weeks. So now I'm using two other littler compressors, you know, to make it work. And I don't think we got Slurpee machines, smaller ones sitting around. No. Maintenance agreement, how much maintenance is normally on this, how much was it down, the current one that we have, you know, all that information, we could get that looking for next.
Yeah, they do have an average lifespan of approximately 10 years. But we'll get that, those numbers to you.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions? Are we going to get that information next Tuesday? Are we referring it to them or what?
No, I would support.
No, I, moved in support. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Pinconning Park, this is a grant for viewing scope.
So moved.
Support. Moved in support. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Durancha.
We have a huge birding population of people coming up there from all over the state and all over the United States. It's one of the hotspots with viewing migration of birds and stuff like that. And while we were there for a meeting a couple of weeks ago, people, representatives from the community foundation were there and kind of gave us a few ideas of things. And one of them was the scope. So it's a pretty good-sized thing. It's indestructible. We'll put it out on our tower so that people can view, just like they see, you know, other places. So it's a great opportunity. Hopefully, we'll get the grant.
State park has two of them.
Right.
If you're over there to borrow one tonight. All right. Anybody, Commissioner?
So, in reading that, is the whole, tell us, $2,500, you know, we're going to put a full amount from the lookout.
Yes, that's what it appears to be. And I know would be, I guess there's already talk about applying for a second grant in the future. There's a possibility of one coming up. That would place one at the gazebo and one at the lookout tower.
Okay. That's a great idea.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. From the county building, this is the fire alarm system. All opposed, motion carries. From the County Building, this is the fire alarm system upgrade. Johnny, do you want to add a little bit?
Yeah, our fire alarm panel is approximately 20 years old. This upgrade would clean it up, bring it up to today's technology, with the horns and the strobes, and just this past year, we, we had two providers, one providing the fire protection, monitoring the building, and then we had the burglar alarm and panic alarms. We've incorporated the panic and the burglar alarm that's attached to the Treasurer's office to the existing fire panel, so we eliminated one vendor, and we incorporated that all into one panel. At that time, they suggested we upgrade the panel, and that's what we were looking to do.
Commissioner Krieger.
So, if there were to be a situation this afternoon, will our fire system work, the alarms go off, or
Yes.
Do we just sit here? So, it's still functioning, but it could be functioning better, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, do they, do they do like a walkthrough with you? Because I know, you know, the fire code changes so much, you know, it changes every three years, but do they like to make sure that, you know, seeing how long it was done, that these things are in the right place, is the best way to say it.
Right.
Because everything, you know, the laws on ADA has changed, you know, in 20 years, and I just wonder if they, just so they have some responsibility for, you know, like you said, they did the walkthrough building, and they said this is where it needs to be, it's all in the right place.
I was referring to the vendor that we have, the Gale Fire Protection, but we just had the fire marshal walk through, Bob Beck, from Bay City.
He's a good guy. I know the guy that taught us.
Oh, yeah. And he addressed our exits, I mean, and everything, so we addressed all that, brought that up to date on a lot of them, and emergency lighting, and spires of horns and the strobes go, now you can get a combo.
Yeah.
So, it kind of, you eliminate some of the costs.
Yeah. As I said, just so there, there's a lot of times they change, they change, you know, the distances, things like that, it's like, like the one that's over here, you know, there just has to be one out here too, you know, they change things, like there has to be one, there would have to be one in the room over there, you know, just so everybody's covered. But sometimes if you have somebody in a position, you know, so they're able to, strobe, they're able to alert people in case you have a deaf person, deaf person in the building, you know, something like that.
Sure.
I mean, that's kind of what it covers. But I just want to make sure that, you know, I know that it all works good, and the fire marshal does a great job, but just so everybody's covered.
And we do, do an annual test, and then periodically, we do a non-planned test, maybe somebody burns popcorn and keys the building.
Yeah, there's toys like that.
Yeah.
Mr. Redmond.
Mr. Redmond.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just happened to think about this, I wasn't aware of this project, but we may be able to explore RAP grant funding from MMRMA to defray some of the expense. I mean, even if we, we have to be reimbursed for purchases, but they will reimburse up to six months after the purchase, may qualify security enhancement, so if we can work on that.
Good job.
Sounds good, because I think MMRMA has, over the past number of years, provided quite a bit of upgrades to the facilities in the county. That's great.
So, we'll check into that.
All right, thank you. All right, there's no other discussion. All in favor?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. We already did that.
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The Bay County Jail, we've got some ceiling panels for eight cells to upgrade.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner Lux.
So, I was very surprised that the ceilings of our jail cells are plastic, you know, if you're in a jail, it's different, but, you know.
Don't tell anybody.
Yeah, apparently, I shouldn't have talked about it, but, you know, and wholeheartedly, it's sort of supportive, people that, you know, it's very first degree.
All right, Bob?
I was just wondering if that would be available, give a grant from MMRMA?
We should, you know, we can explore all the sections. I was recently informed that we can submit multiple grants during the same grant cycle. Unfortunately, the grant cycle is, this, this one is due date is October 7th, so we'd be under a crunch, but there'll be another one after, you know, we can submit it anytime, and it will be awarded after the first year, so.
All right, sounds good. Any other discussion? All right, will we move in support of this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Law Enforcement Center, this is Contactors for a couple of chillers.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Health Officer, this is a non-point source program grant.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? I think it's a good start. Joel, you're behind this, correct?
Correct.
I think it's a great start to get rolling on some of the non-point source possible pollution problems that exist in the area, so keep up the good work, and hopefully, I think you're working on some other things as well, aren't you?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Commissioner Krieger.
So, Joel, this will kind of go hand in hand with the work that's going on with our code, correct?
That's right. We are writing this grant, we've submitted this grant twice before and have not been awarded. We are writing this particular grant to reflect what could be anticipated changes in the sanitary code, excuse me, and the whole point of the grant is to work with homeowners, to educate them on what their system is, how their system works, and how to properly maintain that, so that systems can, if properly maintained, a septic system can last 30, 40 years. If it's not properly maintained, it can go as soon as a year, but it will often go within a few dozen years.
And this would give that individual a free pump out one time?
One time free pump out, yes. They'll have to contribute some funds, but in essence, the, the majority of the funding would come from this grant.
Would some of this grant money be used towards, we've talked about different software programs that are out there, that would help us find these, manage what's going on?
That's a, that's an excellent point. We are also putting into the grant application provisions that we can use our GIS software, so that anyone, actually, any homeowner can go on to the system and find out where their system is, and actually bring up records as well, kind of like a patient portal on a health information record, so.
Okay. Well, it's exciting to see this finally start to come all together. Been a number of years in a little, or had done a lot of work, but you've made some major steps forward, so congratulations, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, Commissioner McGee?
Just to point out, at the monitoring meeting, they've got some grant money coming in to help with the filter strips that run off for that, for that area monitor, they've got the consultant working with them on that, and they did bring up this non-point source runoff also to help clean up that section of the river, although they're trying to keep, you know, the overflow of sediment from building up and working on the river and that section.
Anybody else? Thank you, Joel. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Personnel Director, we have HR Workplace Services, this is to do some work with the Affordable Care Act reporting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I kind of lost my place here a second. From the Michigan Department of State Subscription Services Program, governmental accounts.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have the Nationwide Retirement Solutions, it's the Roth contribution amendment to the Deferred Compensation Plan.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Krieger.
If we could, maybe in the future, if we could get somebody to come in and actually explain or talk about this Roth program, that 457, what it consists of, and how it's dispersed amongst the employees and retirees or whoever.
Sure, come to the one of the board meetings.
Yeah.
Sure.
That'd be great.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have some payables from the general, and how was it?
Moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Finance Officer, we have some budget adjustments, and I believe one of them we're going to refer back, Bob, till next Tuesday.
The one on child care, our finance officer, James, or Dan, has said it's going to re-figure it, so that we made sure that we're only appropriating for the childcare, the foster care home parents.
Okay, and then what we'll do, we'll refer that, or refer that back
Refer that to the board.
To the, okay, we'll refer that back to the administration, and they'll come back next week on the board on that one particular line item. I think it's 260, you know, 262, something like that. So, that means, Commissioner Till.
I agree with that. The, just the other piece with the juvenile facility, that has to do with some of the destruction that happened, and they had the roof leak this summer, the follow-up expenses, or what are those dollars for?
$14,000 for the home energy management system.
Home maintenance for energy management system, that's a needed group this way.
Okay.
Is this going to be an upgrade?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. Any other discussion on budget adjustments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have the analysis of the general fund equity for 2016, a motion to receive it being ordered?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have the update of the Executive Director of 2007-11, a motion to receive, would be in order?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Referrals. We have a new referral, the unfinished business, new business. Commissioner?
Is this where we need to listen? About the canopy for the loading dock at the DOA roof extension?
Yeah.
I will make a motion for this.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion?
The only discussion I would have is that, you know, this is a fairly new facility, it needs to be put back exactly like it was.
Yeah, well, hopefully, somebody's watching that.
Sure. Yes, Pumphord Construction is, would be doing the work. They built the building, they've got the panels, the color matches the same, which is a good thing. They tell me there's some structural damage beyond the panel, which I don't see, but I would like to be there at the time when they kind of dismantle this. So, yeah, we would be making sure everything is done and put back the way it should be.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Any other new business? No closed session?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. And miscellaneous? Under announcements, we have the public hearing on next Tuesday on the 2017 Bay County budget proposed by the County Executive. That's going to be our next meeting, 4 o'clock next Tuesday. And anybody else have anything?
Commissioner Jerran's always in order.
Support. Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?